Got thirty seconds. Okay, it is now by fifteen. I called to order the meeting of the Joint Planet Commission and the City Council Work Session for Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. We have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Hansaker.
Here.
Commissioner Bunch.
Good evening.
Commissioner Bartholomew.
Hello.
Commissioner Riles.
Present.
Commissioner Verba.
Present.
Commissioner Neparud.
Present.
Commissioner Cardoza.
Present.
And Commissioner Green.
Here.
And Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Count, oh, perfect. Counselor Montague.
I'm here.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor McGee.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Johnson II.
There.
Right, well, I'll turn the meeting over to Ann.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller, Ann Catlin with the Community Development Department, and I am going to go ahead and share my screen. I, if I'd had this PowerPoint presentation ready for you last week, I would have sent it out. I apologize in advance, but final touches happened today, so just a minute here. All right, so tonight, we are hoping to start the conversation and make some headway on one aspect of the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules that apply to the city around parking reform. Just a reminder of what the rules, whoops, oh geez, sorry, rules entail. And, and I'll go over this in more detail as we get through the slides, but the, there are quite a few aspects to the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities rules related to parking. There's, there are two parts to the parking. I'll talk about those. EV charging capacity, creating and identifying, well, identifying first, climate-friendly areas, and then implementing those areas. By the end of this year, we will identify potential climate-friendly areas, and we have our first big public meeting about that next Tuesday, the twenty-first, at six PM in this room. And then over the next year, we would look at how we would adopt rules for those areas. And then the, the last, but probably one of the more important pieces is there will be numerous amendments to our Transportation Systems Plan, because a lot of this relates to transportation issues. So regarding parking, so there's part A and there's part B, and I just want you to know, part A is actually already in effect. It was one of the provisions that we automatically can apply the state rules without having to amend our development code, which is great, because we're gonna need to amend the development code to comply with part B, and it's just nice to do it all at once. So I wanted to review with you what is currently in place regarding parking reform. And essentially, the parking reform is related to reducing parking requirements. And then later, at, at a future work session, we'll talk about parking lot design. So tonight, we're really talking about parking requirements. So the first phase, part A, we can no longer require parking for developments that are located within, within one-half mile of a transit line. So you can see the little map below, and I'll show you a bigger map. The blue lines are, are existing when actually proposed transit lines, when they implement the, the latest updates to those lines. And then the orangish golden color circle, the bubbles around those is the half-mile radius, and there's a little tiny little area that is in the middle of the city that is not within the half-mile. So today, we cannot require parking for any development within those bubbles. In addition, if the development is outside of those bubbles, and you can see that not much of the city is outside of those bubbles, there are some specific reductions to parking requirements for certain types of uses, mostly residential-related and treatment facility-type uses. So that's already in effect. So parking reform, part B, we're getting started on that today, and most of what we'll talk about tonight and March sixth is reform that we need to amend our code by June thirtieth and adopt the reform. So tonight, we're gonna go over picking an approach to parking, and then some associated ripple effects to that approach related to bicycle parking, accessible parking, and carpool and vample parking. We're gonna need to have a maximum parking standard, and then we'll talk about electric vehicle charging capacity. And then at a future work session, we'll talk about parking lot improvements. So the first item for your consideration is picking an approach to managing parking. And this first slide kind of summarizes the three options before you, which are in the administrative rules, which I'll abbreviate as OAR sometimes, and that's Oregon Administrative Rules. Summarize here, but I have a slide for each one. So, so one option is repeal parking citywide. We're not gonna talk about all these yet, but one option is to repeal parking citywide. A section, a second option is to enact three of five different management approaches, and there's kind of a list of them, unbending parking, taxing, lease parking, and a couple other things which, if you, if you read them, and I know you read your memo, we find would be challenging for us to enforce and implement and manage. And then option three is we would have that same radius where we don't allow parking, but then in addition to that, uses and developments outside of the no-parking area that's currently in effect, we would have to not allow, not require parking for a variety of really specific different uses, like burries, and I mean, the list is kind of interesting and long. So looking at option one, this is that same map you saw earlier, just a little bit larger, and essentially, the areas that are currently not, not covered by the parking waiver, the waiver-to-our-re requirements are in the red circles, and then North Albany, unfortunately, my map that I got from TIS didn't cover all of North Albany. And then there's a little bit over in East Albany, just a few areas. So in the memo, we provided a staff recommendation, and given that most of the city is already no longer required to provide parking, that is staff's recommendation. Another reason to go that route is because having multiple different parking standards can get a little confusing, not just for us, but for the public to determine, well, which set of standards am I looking at? But we can pause for discussion, and I do have a more detailed slide on each of the other options, but any thoughts on going this route? And I will say, the cities that have had these policy discussions already, and around our size and larger or smaller, have chosen to go this route, because the other options just have their challenges, so.
Is this, is this the time for questions, did you say? Okay. I, I don't mean to be dense here, but would you please define what it means to repeal parking citywide?
It means the market would determine what parking to provide. So currently today, we have a, and actually, it was, I think, Attachment D in your packet, we require a certain number of parking spaces for each use type, and it's typically based on the square footage of a building. And when somebody wants to build a new building, another thing they need to provide is parking, and we count up the number of spaces, and did they meet that requirement, and you know, all the other things that are associated with those. In the repeal parking model, which is already in effect for most of the city, we will not require parking, but when a development is proposed, they still have to meet our parking lot standards, but we would no longer have to count up whether they provided enough spaces and met the development code requirement. So just in even simpler terms, in an example, let's just say Novak's wants to put in a new restaurant over by the mall, like, or your new one, or just on a vacant property where there's no parking. Rather than looking at the formula, one space per hundred square feet, or whatever it is for restaurants, you would go, you know what, I think I need this many parking spaces, and it may be less than what our current code requires. It may be more, and we're gonna talk about that a little bit later, but basically, you would determine how much parking you need. So.
And you would be taxed on your parking?
Nope, there's no tax. A second option requires us to select three of five parking management approaches. One of those is collecting a tax on leased spaces and commercial parking lots. So repealing parking, I, I mentioned several options. Repealing parking is only that. You have to comply with the standards when you do provide parking, landscaping, and setting aside spaces for accessibility, et cetera, but you would determine how many spaces you need to provide.
I appreciate that. I do have a second question, which is in regard to this map that I'm looking at, and part of this is my own fault for not bringing readers, but I promise you, even if I had remembered my readers, I can't read any of those words, and I'm not, I'm, I'm visually kind of challenged in the sense that I don't know, I don't know what I'm looking at here. If I, if I saw streets or landmarks or something, that would help, but I, what's not, the red circles.
So.
Where is that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't provide a legend here. So the city urban, well, the city limits line is black dotted lines, and the blue lines are, are current transit and, and proposed transit lines. The red circles are areas that are outside of that half-mile buffer where we currently don't require parking. So there are only a few areas in the city right now where we would still require parking. And I was just trying to identify where those areas were, so that you could see that, and then areas in North Albany, up above the orange line about, you know, a little ways up North Albany Road. I have a quick question. So this is parking in regards to motor vehicle parking, correct? Yeah, right now, we're talking about vehicle parking. This doesn't have anything to do with bicycle parking. Okay. So there wouldn't be like a percentage requirement for bicycle rack spaces? Yeah, we're gonna talk about that in a moment. Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, just to start explaining this, it's a good question, because if we repeal parking, which, you know, is, it's already repealed in, in a lot of the city, our current bicycle parking standards are based on our parking, on the parking provided, in most cases, except residential, multi-dwelling unit developments. So we need to modify our parking requirements, so that we're still requiring bicycle parking for developments, even when they, when a development or developer chooses not to provide the vehicle parking spaces. So those are some of the questions we have for you tonight, to get your input, and we can bring back standards for your consideration.
I, I just have a comment that I, I think that option one is a great idea, and let the market decide how many pockets, parking spaces each of our businesses and, and different residential development needs. So I think hopefully, we'll move more towards less parking needed in the future, and that, I think this is a great first step.
So this was that? This applies specifically just to non-lease parking, correct?
No. No development will need to provide parking, and if we do it citywide, it would be citywide. Currently, most of the city does not have to provide parking. So option one is to repeal, to make that, you know, bubble area where we don't require parking anymore, apply citywide.
But if you own a lot, you can still lease your spots, but so I'm asking.
Yeah, you, that doesn't impact any of that. You just won't have to provide parking.
Okay.
One of the things that we aren't gonna talk about a lot today, but if somebody is overbuilt on parking, or maybe uses have changed, and a building has got, happens to have inherited a really large parking lot, the rest of that parking lot, the areas that they don't need, could be redeveloped, and actually, we will need to adopt policies and code language to encourage redevelopment for bicycle and transit-oriented development as we see those needs increase, but it could be redeveloped with another building or use. So we don't have any requirements around lease parking in our code, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
So that, that was actually one of the questions I wanted to ask, is what do we do with excess parking? And I, I guess, for reference, this isn't the first time I've seen codes like this. They've been coming for quite a long time in different areas, little greater density than we have, so I'm not surprised, but one of the, the kind of questions that, well, the simple question, I think, is that, so there's no minimum parking required, will there be maximum set? Because in some municipalities, they have set maximum amounts of parking that you could provide, and you can't provide more than that. Is this, what you're saying is this is really just sort of market-driven? We're going to let people put as much as they want? There won't be an upper limit or a lower limit?
We will be talking about maximum parking next. The first step is to decide whether you want to repeal parking citywide, or go with some of the other options, which would only apply to the areas outside of the orangish gold line on the map here, mostly in the red areas and in North Albany. So yes, the state is gonna require us to adopt some maximum parking standards, and we'll talk about that next.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to say that I am in agreement with Counselor Montague. I, I think option one is the most reasonable approach.
I agree also.
So I just had a question for clarification, and maybe we'll get to this when we start talking about the EV requirements. So if we get rid and repeal the parking mandates, the EVs have certain set requirements based on the number of parking spaces that are there. So will we be able to kind of adjust those requirements if we repeal it?
So we know that parking will still be provided for some time, and the EV parking requirements currently in place, and the adjustments that are proposed, or that we need to comply with, actually, we don't, we don't have any alternative, will be based just on the parking provided. It's a percentage of parking provided. So you know, the city could consider whether we wanted to provide, require EV charging spaces, or capacity for the charging spaces. When parking is not provided, I mean, there are some questions we have for you coming up, but right now, the, you, you can't provide EV charging capacity if there aren't parking spaces there. So I mean, and that's kind of a discussion we had internally today, but I mean, the if parking is provided, they would need to comply with the EV capacity requirements.
Okay, I have some follow-ups that I'll ask.
Yeah.
That section.
And this is for both, going forward for future development, for both commercial and residential. Thank you.
And employment. Yep. So, do I? Well, we just want general support, hands. Do you wanna support repealing parking? See, you might have heard that from most people. If not, that's okay, we can go through the other options, and then the final decision after that, but we just thought we would save time if there's mostly support to repeal parking citywide, and we can move on to what the impacts of that might mean.
Some, some.
So I need to know what, hold on, slow down, and we'll get there. I'm trying to find out from Ann her process that she needs to.
We don't need an official motion.
Okay, no official motions, just if the majority say.
No, because we're bringing back the actual language for your consideration through a whole public hearing and legislative process. Okay. We just need to know what to bring back to you.
All right. So it's longer than the majority says.
Yeah, the, the key is to, to kind of have the majority of this group saying, yes, we, we wanna move forward with, with option one, where the city's no longer gonna have a required parking. That way, we don't, as staff, get surprised, or you, as, as our deciding members, the, the, that we get there and we say, well, Jesus isn't what we expected, because we're, at this point, moving forward, we'll be kind of setting a, a ball rolling down a hill, going down this path. So we're just wanting to make sure everybody is comfortable with that path that we're on.
So I'm hearing a lot of, of support for option one. Do we need to have additional discussion from Ann, or do you wanna hear more before we give them our recommendation to move forward?
I think Counselor Novak has a question, is that?
I do. Okay. Yes, yet another question, just to clarify, just to make sure I'm understanding here. So repealing the parking citywide, which so many other cities have done, because the other two options are not easy to enforce at all. We all understand that, I think. I certainly understand that. So again, just to be clear, the parking that currently exists, unless it's in overabundance, because the building's not being used the same way or something, we're not going to mow down all the parking in the city, right? We're just requiring that new developments don't have to provide parking. Apart from what the market will bear.
Right. That's correct, but we aren't gonna go in and take over that parking, but if a property owner, you know, and business goes, you know what, things have changed. I'm, I had to build this many parking spaces because the city required me to do that, and you know what, I see only half of those spaces occupied. They may go, hmm, maybe I can lease some of these spaces to my neighbor over here who doesn't have enough parking, or, gosh, maybe I can have a, you know, Dutch Brothers, or, or, you know, use some of my parking lot for another use.
Revenue generator.
Yeah.
Any more questions? Go ahead, Karen.
So this is assuming that people are gonna be walking and biking instead of driving, right?
No, this is assuming that people are gonna be walking and driving instead of driving, walking and biking.
Well.
So what if they don't?
Yeah, I think that the market is gonna say, you know what, people are still driving cars, right?
So you can go back, you can go back.
You can provide parking. We're not saying you can no longer provide parking. We're just saying, we're not gonna tell you how many spaces to provide.
Yeah, a, a great example is, one of the things, when we get new development that comes in currently, and sometimes one of the, the topics that we discuss the most is how many parking stalls that they'll need to provide, and, and a lot of times, it's, they don't wanna provide that many parking spaces, and we'll say, jeez, we don't, we know our business, we don't need this many parking spaces. That's why this option for staff, and why staff recommends it, is we recognize they know their business better than we do. This provides the market to decide how much parking they're going to provide, understanding that if, if you build a a grocery store, and you only provide three parking spaces, a lot of people probably aren't gonna go to your grocery store, at least currently right now. But it also, to Counselor Novak's point, it's not, we're not gonna go out and start sending people's letters saying, hey, you, you have too many spaces. That's never going to happen. That's the existing parking that's out there, gets to remain as long as they want it to remain. We're, but very simply, the city's getting out of the parking business of how many spaces you have to provide. Now, knowing that we're kind of moving forward with that option one, we do have some policy discussions. We have to talk about maximum parking, because you, we take ourselves out of the parking regulation business of how many spaces. We do need to talk about, oh geez, what if you have so many ones to come in and build four hundred spaces, when they only need two, or twenty? Well, that, that's a problem. So we, we have to put kind of an upper limit on that, as well as by removing that parking requirement or minimum parking spaces. We need to talk about, how do we provide ADA spaces? How do we provide parking space, or bicycle spaces, which is what Ann said was suggested we're gonna be moving forward to next, because those are all coupled to our existing minimum parking standards, so.
So hopefully, they do walk and bike a lot more, because I, you know, I've heard a lot of people complain, because there's no place to park. Well, then, you know, it's gonna be up to the individual business owners then, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any more questions? So I'm assuming, unless there's some objections, option one from this council and commission.
Okay, I'm gonna skip the next two slides. All right, so as some of you have already brought up, if we repeal parking, which we no longer require parking to be provided, when it's not provided, there are still some things that need to be provided, and bicycle parking is one of those. State law does require that we that we require bicycle parking, and they do have some minimums for residential, and some guidelines for some, for retail and commercial and other uses. So in your packet, we provided you a spreadsheet that showed you what our current parking requirements are, and it's, it's a couple pages long, because we we just have a whole bunch of different uses and different parking standards. But also in this table, we provided you with, we have, we found a couple of other cities that are that require bicycle parking based on use, rather than as a percentage of the parking provided, and I provided you with the Tuolton and Salem's bicycle parking standards. And after we pulled all this together, and I've kind of been doing more research, a lot of cities are gonna have to do the same thing we're doing. We can probably simplify this table to just be a bicycle parking table, but I was trying to show you what other cities are doing for similar use types, but in most cases, the state requires us to have, to require at least two bicycle parking spaces, but for certain types of development, we might require, you know, point-two spaces per thousand square feet, or something like that, with two spaces as a minimum. And then residential development, that's multi-dwelling developments of five or more units, we will need to require one space per unit. So it is gonna be more than we currently require for multifamily, so our code is actually not complying with the state law regarding that. So there isn't really any specific input here today, but if you, initially, we're thinking, oh, maybe we'll, we'll do something like Tuoltons, and, and I think the staff recommendation in the memo is that we look at Tuolton's ratios, which seem to be similar to our current ratio of about ten percent of provided parking, but come up with a simplified table, and we can bring that back to you. The other thing that we will be bringing back to you is not just the amount of bicycle parking, but part of what we're gonna be talking to you on March sixth is the requirements for bicycle parking. So our code currently requires the, we have a certain amount of space between each bicycle parking space, and that half of them are covered and all that. One of the things state law requires is that we provide bicycle parking for not just your standard, what I'll now call a skinnier bicycle, but that we also provide some spaces that accommodate the wider cargo style or family-style bicycles. You know, the bicycle community is sort of evolving over time, and so we would be bringing that back. I, I would love any input, or if you've heard or seen any deficiencies around town, but But we do have a a policy question coming up for you, but but we will need to amend our bicycle parking standards. Accessible parking. State law in the building codes, accessible parking spaces are based on the parking provided. We cannot require more than one parking space when parking is not provided. That's kind of what this DLCD and the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the State Building Codes Division decided. So we'll talk about that. And then carpool and van pool. We need to require preferential treatment for where those spaces are located. But, you know, if parking isn't provided, you know, there may not be any of those. So that's something we're gonna talk about here in a minute. And the, what I've found in looking at other jurisdictions' codes is that the carpool, van pool spaces are for employers where they might have parking set aside for their employees and it's a percentage of their employees. So I just wanted to tell you what we're, what the impacts are of of repealing parking. So.
Before you move on, Anne, I have a question about, you know, we have the scooter people, the scooters here in town. And people are was upset about them being on the side, the sidewalk and entryways and stuff like that. Would that be part of that bicycle parking you're talking about?
No, state law doesn't say anything about scooter parking. But I mean, I'm not sure how we would do that. But I mean, if there are lockers or something, I mean, that's a really good question. I I don't know if any, I don't know if communities are starting to do that. I mean, technology is changing so rapidly and keeping up with what the needs are for around that.
Okay, and then there's also those big electronic bikes or the electrical bikes that are out now.
Yep.
They're bigger than a standard bike, wider tires. They take up more space.
Yep.
So that's part of the bicycle parking.
Yeah, we need to be looking ahead. So when we bring back some parking standards, we currently have parking standards. You know, the the space standards, we're going to be bringing back suggestions to accommodate more diversity in bicycles that is here today already.
Are we considering like the front cargo bicycles? Okay. I'd love to see more parking for that.
Yeah, well, I mean, people have to put it in, but we'll have standards around those. And a percentage of the overall bicycle parking spaces will need to be spaces that can accommodate cargo and wider bicycles. Any other thoughts around bicycle parking? We do have some questions here that might help us continue to talk through some of these, the the areas where we need your input in order to bring back draft code. So when a development or developer chooses not to provide parking with their development, should we require, we will have to require bicycle parking still. But should we require the accessible space that we're allowed to do one space? And also the carpool and van pool parking spaces.
So say it's a multi, like a business, they only require to put one ADA compliant space in.
So if somebody provides parking, they will need to comply with state law around the ADA space requirements. It's a table. If you have a certain number of spaces that you're providing, you still have to provide all those. If a developer chooses not to provide any parking, do we want to require that accessible space? So that they would still have to provide at least one parking space and maybe one van pool space? Or something like that.
Again, just to clarify, this is not retroactive. This is going forward only.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any thoughts on that? I mean, we're we're trying to research what other communities are doing. But one thing to consider is if there's room on a site, like especially new construction, we should probably require that accessible space. And if they want to provide more than one, that's okay. But there are some other areas of town, like downtown, where you might have a change of use or a use expansion where there there isn't any parking provided now. So there might be shared parking facilities that are serving the downtown, for example. So I think if there's support to provide one space where there is room on a property, we can, we can craft language around that for for accessible parking. And then I'm just kinda seeing head nods around that, where there's room. And then the other consideration is van pool parking. If you would wanna require a carpool, van pool space when no parking is provided.
Yeah, Anne, I think that's very reasonable to expect both of those things. It's been my experience, you know, doing this for over forty years, that clients are very concerned about parking and getting the right amount. It's always comes up on every project. And so I think, you know, that this zero idea that someone would do something when they had the ability and provide none is probably gonna be a pretty severe outlier. Whether it's for your employees or your customers, accessibility to buildings is important for their success. So I think, I don't think we should worry too much about zero. But if there were a case that there was limited use on site or that or the owner didn't wanna do it, I think ADA, some ADA accessibility and clearly a carpool, van pool ability for drop off zone is not just convenience. There's a safety factor there that I think is important. So I, I think we need to consider that. And then when it comes to the bicycle parking, I've put in large bicycle parking areas. And they're not ever very satisfactory. I think it's kind of a neat idea to be able to consider what is a better bicycle parking setup for security and lockability and weather and all that. So I look forward to weighing in on that. That's, that's about it.
Commissioner Riles said what I was gonna say. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on that because I've been thinking this whole time from a business person's perspective. You don't get business without having parking somewhere. People, if if people are gonna come to you, whether in our case, as a restaurant especially, some folks can bike, but a lot of folks can't. And so parking, as a business person, I think, as Commissioner Riles said, that's, that's always gonna be in the back of a developer's mind, whether whether it's an office that you're running, like our mayor, or or as they say, a restaurant or whatever. You, you, if you, if people can't get to you, if they can't, and this whole idea of of getting rid of a lot of different vehicles is is, I think, it's fine to talk about it, but the reality is, this is pretty much, and especially in Oregon, you know, you can have a cargo bike. But who wants to, I'm just thinking, who wants to ride their big bike with it that can hold cargo in the middle of winter with the downpours that we get? Or even just the super cold and the ice and have to load your groceries into an open air conveyance and get them home and they're soaked and you're soaked? And I don't know, it's just not very appealing. I think that we need to consider that this change will happen over time. And I hope no one's gonna push to do anything super drastic and super quickly.
I have a few points. So one, I went on a wonderful date with my husband on Saturday. We went to dinner and to a movie. And I wish that you could have seen the mass exodus of folks that were walking out of the downtown movie theater to walk home. Like, we weren't walking home alone. There were, I would say, about a dozen other people. And we were all kind of being able to discuss the movie.
Yeah, that's great.
People are already walking and they're already biking.
They live here, but you all live in town.
Yeah, and there's other places that people can go where they live and they can walk. And I hope that we have a a more accessible community where people can, you know, not have to drive twenty minutes to get to a grocery store, fifteen minutes to get to a grocery store. But my other point is, this is not parking that is being like, like how Anne said, we're getting out of the parking business. We aren't forcing folks to have have the parking and and it's gonna be a market, a market selection thing. And then also, to your point, cargo bikes are fantastic. They have electric assist now. So if you're maybe a wimp like me and you wanna use an electric assist, you absolutely can. You can tow your kids and they actually have great waterproof barriers. And it's, it's not difficult.
I will have to check out your bike.
Yeah.
So you would take your bike in in the rain or whatever?
I have, and when I was in college, I also took it in the snow.
Cool. Definitely wanna see that.
Yeah, ditto that.
I just wanna say that most people won't.
Some people don't have a choice, so let's be real about that. But my, my comment was just what I think I heard you say, Anne, was if they have room, we need to make sure that that's defined pretty well, cuz that's kind of subjective. And then I also echo the, I believe the market will drive the the need for parking. And once they need at least one space, then the the ADA accessibility will come into play. So I think that we could be flexible in that, those requirements too, depending on the the location. That's all I had.
So for ADA, I think it is very important to ensure that we have it. And so we can do at least the one minimum. I think that would be super helpful. But if we can consider specific categories, kind of like in the table for the Tuolton example, based on the type of business, so like for medical facilities, so we can ensure that people can actually get to where they need to go. And so how we do that is obviously part of, you know, the conversation here.
Well, so the Building Division actually reviews the location of the accessible spaces and and they need to be located with at least path, you know, resistance to the the door and all that. Oh, you're talking about the accessible, the location of the accessible spaces? Yep. Yeah, so they are looking at that. And actually, there are requirements that developments spend a certain amount for budget on accessibility. And so this is already kind of dialed into, and and Bill probably knows more about this than I do, into some of the work and improvements that are being made within the facilities and all the properties to meet those minimum percentages of their budget that it's going to remove barriers to accessibility.
Does the accessibility of the conversation around electric cars and all of that stuff, is that part of the accessibility conversation?
Yep, so we're gonna talk about that with the electric cars, whether you, when when vehicle EV charging capacity is provided, we should probably make sure that there is some capacity for your ADA spaces and not just non-ADA spaces. So we'll talk about that. But I can, any other comments right now? There are a couple of things on the slide and and one important one. So I mentioned this earlier, but we do have uses that change over time on an existing development site. And sometimes those developments do not meet our current code. So, I mean, I asked this as a question, but generally, and I don't know that we would have much opportunity to deviate this. But when a development site does not meet our current code, and in this case, it's not necessarily gonna be around parking because we wouldn't be requiring parking, but probably bicycle facilities or van pool spaces that we would require the development to comply with the current parking standards for things other than vehicles. So the bicycle parking, striping a space or identifying a space for a van pool space, if that ended up applying to them. I just wanted to, we could look at just applying the standard for maybe expansions to buildings over a certain size. But right now, when we have changes of use, we're looking at, do they provide enough parking and all that? And and it, the standards that we adopt would, for bicycle parking, would apply for in those situations. But I just wanted to know if you had any concerns with that? Or if you had any maybe examples where that may not work?
To provide some clarification, that where maybe an example is say, we have a commercial space in the, maybe there was a a doctor's office in there. And then the doctor's office leaves and you have a new space come in, like a bakery. And they, they're not gonna change their parking at all, but with that change of use, they're required to get building permits for the change of occupancy. So the question is really is, at that time, there may not have been any bicycle parking for the doctor's office. But since they're coming in for that change of use, would we wanna require them to come up to the current development code and provide whatever we decide on? Say they need to provide one ADA space is kind of what we're hearing and it may be two parking spaces, just throwing out a number. Would we want to, at that time, with that change of use, require them to to bring that portion up to our development code standard? Whatever that.
Well, you know, it's just like you said, that the the business owner should be able to gauge his own parking. I'm sure he's gonna get a request for an ADA. I don't know about a van pool, but you know, he's gonna get a request for an ADA. So it, and then if he has, say, six bicycles spaces that he needs, as opposed to maybe the one or two, is it too late? Can he just add? Or, you know, and then if he knows another ADA, add another ADA, or is it set in stone when he opens up?
Yep, go ahead.
I I was just wondering, along those lines, how how is the market playing in? If we're requiring with change of use, you have, you must do XYZ cuz you're a new, a change of use. So then how how are we letting the market dictate? If we're saying, because it's a change of use, you would need to provide, you know, an ADA space and two bicycles?
And that's the question that we're asking is, do we, do we want to do that if there's in the change of use situation?
Okay, because I thought we've already established that we're going with probably Plan One, which is not requiring parking and letting the market play things out. So for a bakery, again, we're talking food things. So I'm guessing that no one's gonna do a, well, I don't know, actually, maybe somebody will be really gung ho on bikes only and ADA. And I don't care about accommodating a vehicle of any sort, you know, maybe they will. But I just think if we set something, if if we decide to make it a certain way, then do we also allow them to to do what they think is best for their business? Include that.
Well, state law requires us to require bicycle parking. So repeal is only for the vehicle parking. And the ADA space would only be, we would only be allowed to require one space if they don't already have an ADA space. But I think what might be out of compliance on some development sites is the number of bicycle parking spaces. Or maybe they don't have any that accommodate the cargo bikes or the wider EV bicycles. So it's whether we would require them to meet our current code, which typically we require developments to meet our current code. And that's just, you know, what what's usually required. But in most cases, you're not having to add more parking spaces with the change of use. So we wouldn't have to worry about parking. But now we would be looking at bicycle parking, meeting our bicycle standards. And we could come up with some situations that might allow exemptions from improving their, meeting the standards. But typically, we would just require those situations to provide.
Okay, Bill had a comment.
So currently, state law in Oregon requires the upgrade of ADA accessibility, starting with the parking space and up to twenty-five percent of any remodels, upgrades or additions, apart from change of use. Now, change of use then also allows any local municipality to to look at it as a new project. And so the the ADA thing is pretty well handled by the state right now. And so someone came in and there wasn't an ADA parking space, they would be required to provide at least one. And so you're just applying the same logic if you wanna upgrade the bicycle. I mean, we're looking at a general good, right? We're not looking at a necessarily a specific thing to that use, but a general good that we should provide accessible spaces to the community. Well, you could make the same exact argument for your bikes or your van pool drop off and apply them the same way. But I think it's worth looking at and bringing it to us to to see what we think of of what those rules would look like. But you wouldn't be doing anything that isn't already happening now.
Again, Commissioner Riles jumped the queue and said what I was gonna say. He just said it better. Thank you.
Okay, so there is one more policy input and it's related to bicycle parking. So in the downtown area, where we want wide sidewalks and sidewalks with walking capacity and and table capacity, a lot of these buildings in certain areas, especially downtown, they're built fully out. There's no opportunity for. There's no opportunity for bicycle parking on their property. So not for current uses, but if there was a change of use and more bicycle parking was required, and a developer didn't want to provide it, or they weren't able to provide it, would we want to consider charging what we call an in lieu of fee, where you would pay the money, kind of like an SDC fee to the city, and the city would figure out where it could provide shared parking facilities in, in an area and use those funds to provide those facilities. Corvallis is considering this for their bicycle parking. It's something that, and we've heard, heard from our staff that we don't have enough of the right types of bicycle parking spaces in the downtown area. Where would they go? Covered parking, lockable parking, all that kind of stuff. It, it's expensive. And so, you know, in some of these areas where we don't require any parking, like downtown, and we have shared parking, who, who's going to help pay for improving those facilities to meet needs? So that's something to think about, and, and I just thought I'd ask so that we can kind of ponder it a little bit more. But yeah, so I'd love your input on that.
So where would they be? If you have a city block and downtown, would it be at one end of the block and then another end of the block? Or where would they be?
We, we would have to figure that out. So one of the things, we, we, you wouldn't know exactly where your money was going right away. But once we had enough money and had a plan for where future bicycle parking would go, it would help build that. That's something we need to work with public works about. So using existing right of way, some of our on-street spaces have been approved for accessible spaces with the engineer's approval, for example. Maybe some of our right of way could be converted. The city owns lots of parking lots in the downtown area. We could set aside a bike garage kind of thing somewhere there. But, you know, how, how would that get paid for?
And as a great example, the, the city currently in our, we, we have stormwater quality requirements for stormwater facilities. There's sometime our sites, especially whether it be in a downtown or already developed area, or sometimes the grades don't allow for them to be able to install a stormwater quality facility. So we have an option for them to pay an in lieu of fee. And that in lieu of fee goes into a pot of money that the city then uses to build a regional facility. And we'd be looking at something similar to that is, if there wasn't an opportunity to provide, say, bicycle parking on site, we could consider an in lieu of fee, and you know, we'd have to have the discussion of what does that fee look like? How big is it? And then just how is it structured? But then that, the concept would be that money would go into a pool that the city would then use that pool to build a regional facility of some sorts. Now, maybe that, what does a regional facility look like? Well, we're, those are the things that we have to kind of come up with and bring back to you. And maybe regional facility looks like one of our on-street parking spaces that we put in facilities for covered bike parking or something like that. So that, that's kind of what this is pointed towards.
So I, I guess the only thing that worries me about in lieu of fee is the idea of somebody being able to pay to not be in compliance. But it sounds like you guys already have kind of careful language in other places. And so I guess the only, the only guidance I would have is be careful in the language so that we avoid that paying for non-compliance, where we, where it's not absolutely necessary.
We would be, have to, have to be cautious how that was structured. Just, just like with our stormwater quality in lieu of fee, there has to be good reasons why. They can't just say, well, we don't, we don't want to put in these facilities, so we'll just pay the fee. That, that's not an option. There has to be good engine, sound engineering reasons why it can't be built. So we'd have to, to look at that when we came up with kind of the qualifications for applying that in lieu of fee.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it'd be a good idea if we already had what we were going to do before we said they could pay the fee, like where is this going to be located, how far away from the business? Before we just start saying, you can pay the money? I think they need to know exactly where their money's going to go and how many it's going to provide. If it was me, I would want to know before I just say I'll pay and I have something to show for it. So I know exactly when I'm building my business plan, or where my folks are going to live, and whatever the case may be. I think it'd be really good to have exactly where it's going to be, how much it's going to facilitate, how many bikes it's going to hold, rainy, I need to know all the details. But I think it'd be important to have that prior to saying you can pay.
Yeah, I, I think that's really important. It's, it's kind of a lot to do by June 30th, but that could be another phase. We don't have to adopt a fee or, or figure that all out by June 30th, but it's something in thinking about our bicycle requirements, and especially in areas where it's challenging to provide bicycle parking, or there are multiple competing goals around bicycle parking. We just want to be thinking about that, and then we can kind of, what, what, what would that look like and what would that mean? So that wouldn't necessarily be a part of the package of amendments we'd be bringing back to you, but we need to start thinking about that now. So, so thank you for your input, and if you have further thoughts or ideas about that, let me know. So, or about any of tonight. Oh, okay, so. Parking maximum, so Commissioner Riles already brought this up. So if we don't require parking, are there situations or areas where we want to make sure people don't provide too much parking? I had, we did some research on what parking has, how, how many developments are providing more parking than is required in the city? And I will say that Lowe's provided 48% more parking than is required, so we call that 148%. But most developments, it's around 110, 100%. When you look at the average and you took out Lowe's with just the last couple of years for commercial and retail, it's around 125%. So 25% more than what's required. For residential, they're pretty much providing what's required, about 10% over. And for industrial uses, they're providing what's required essentially. So the state law requires us to only adopt parking maximums in, in certain areas. We're not required to do it citywide, but several cities, including Lebanon, Corvallis, and others, they already have a parking maximum in their code. We just don't have that, and it could be that it was a requirement that came after we did our most recent, which is not that recent, Transportation Systems Plan. So Corvallis and Lebanon, for example, have a 30% maximum parking requirement. We just don't have one. So there are a couple of things to consider, and I don't know which flows, which should happen first. But what should a parking maximum be? If we're going to have a parking, we, we need to have a parking maximum in a few areas. Downtown is one place we need to have a parking maximum. And then the, the rules say that we need to have a parking maximum in designated community or regional centers. And we haven't, we haven't done that as a community designated regional centers. And then also at, at transit oriented development, and it could be that, I need to double check with the state that we may have to have a parking maximum within a certain radius of our public transit routes. But, so if we're going to have a parking maximum, right now, the only place, we actually do have a parking maximum in the Elm Street Zone, which is the medical district zone over along Elm Street. And that maximum parking is just the current minimum. So I, I think that there are two steps to this. Where might we adopt a parking maximum and what would the maximum be? And I think you could say that in certain areas, the Elm Street District is right around a lot of residential neighborhoods. And so there were concerns from neighbors back in 1999 that the doctors and hospital staff are parking all over, and I, I don't have anywhere to park in front of my house. Downtown, we don't require parking. I mean, chances of parking being provided, that's way over what our minimums are, is something to consider. So maybe in walkable areas, future climate friendly areas, you might want to have a parking maximum that's, that's a little less than maybe other areas of town. So I think there's, the two parts are, do we have one parking maximum? Do we apply it citywide? Do we just look at it in a few areas? And some thoughts on that.
I have a question. What would be the impact if we just did 100% citywide? Like, what would be the challenge of just doing that?
Oh, I think that you would have people that say the market says I need to have more spaces in a few situations than what you're telling me I need to have. So again, it's, it's not a lot of situations, but. So, like, and maybe it's just because our parking requirements are a little off for like vehicle repair. Maybe we're not requiring enough, so you know, you might, if we were to do 100%, take our current standards, we might want to reevaluate, like Dutch Brothers. I've heard that, you know, if it's based on the size of a building, and you've got this little tiny 200 square foot building, which only requires one space, we know that that's not enough, right? So I mean, we could look at that, but we were thinking you might just come up with a rain, a percentage that's over our current minimum. And then you could apply that citywide, and you might just keep our current minimum in the Elm Street Zone and may, maybe downtown.
Could we tie the, the over 100% to incentives that we want to see? Like EV parking, more bike parking, more other types of parking? Or do you think that would be too complicated?
Well, I think, I think multiple standards are going to be complicated, and I think incentives, so the more parking you provide, the more EV spaces you're going to have to provide, because it's a percentage of the spaces you're providing. So I mean, there's already, I mean, I don't know what incentives we could think about. We could think about that, but I, I think Council Kuzinski had a comment which may help with us think through.
Along these lines, along these lines, I guess, if it's being market driven, which we're looking for with that first option we had, I think a new business coming into, say, the downtown core area is going to have a struggle just to find space to build a business, and much less adding more than what would be required for their business for parking. So I think they would be more back to the idea that the, let them decide what is necessary for their business. And you brought up like Dutch Brothers. So they decide what they really need, and I'd say that's, that's working so far. I'm trying to figure out how it's not working even for Lowe's. I mean, are they second guessing the fact that they built 40% more parking spaces than was necessary?
Yeah, I mean, I think one approach could be to keep it as simple as, it's not going to be simple, but we could keep our current parking standards, which are now minimums, and they could be the maximums just in the Elm Street Zone and maybe in downtown, where we have to have some parking maximum considered. And then we could just double check with the state to see where else do we have to have a parking maximum. But Ron probably has some good input on this, because he's moving his way towards, Mr. Irish?
Good evening. Just a few thoughts on the parking minimum or the.
Get really close.
Parking maximum. As Anne mentioned, one of the things coming out of the new regulations is the requirement for the city to update our transportation system plan. And we'll be forced to do that probably within the next year. That TSP update will include things, elements that our current TSP doesn't include. And, and one of the elements we'll be half, that we'll have to address is things that will result in a reduction in vehicle miles traveled. So things that kind of depress the desire or the ability of people to drive around in cars. And one of the ways that happens is through, through a parking reduction. And so I would expect that when we do the TSP update, we will be as part of that, having to implement code language that probably drops whatever level of maximum parking we currently allowed in. We'll have to drop it below that. And so one approach here might be to implement the maximum to required by state law now, but not touch the rest of it until you do the TSP update in about a year. Because we really don't know what those VMT reductions are going to do to us until we get into the TSP update. So lots of different stuff at play.
So if we were to do what Ron is suggesting, and I think what he's trying to do is to show that we've made a lot of progress between what we might adopt now and what we might need to do. So the state maximum that you could have for a, a parking maximum is 150%. So at 50% over your current minimums. We could consider that and adopt it citywide, so there's just one standard, and then just keep the Elm Street Zone the way it is, that the minimum is the maximum. And it would just require us to just update our current minimum table would become the maximum, and we had adjusted to whatever the ratio is that you want to adjust it to. As long as there's some room to drop it down, maybe if Ron is thinking that we might have to drop it down. And then the 150%, I mean, that would cover all the ones that we researched at least. And we could just assume that in the downtown area, even though we want it to be, you know, it's walkable and, and not surface parking lots, that we, they probably wouldn't be providing more than 150%. You know, whatever that requirement is, you know, whatever the amount is. So, I mean, we could just think of whatever you feel might be a good maximum, and we apply that citywide and just have a, a starting point for potential further reductions when we update our transportation plan. I don't know, and what that might be.
So Anne, on the 30% that's in Corvallis, is 30% of the square footage of the building or what?
No, whatever the current parking requirement is, which is based on, usually it's based on your square footage. And I'm just going to use an example, because I'm looking over at Council Novak. Let's just say you have a, a restaurant that is 1,000 square feet, and we require one space for every 100 square feet. So our, let's just pretend like our current minimum for restaurants is, would be 10 spaces for a thousand square foot building. So Corvallis' standard and Lebanon's is you can't provide more than 13 spaces for that development. 30% more than what the minimum requirement is. But now we aren't going to have a minimum anymore, but we can look at what our current minimums are and use that as a guidepost, and then just make that adjustment to be a maximum. I, I know that's confusing, but if, if you originally were required to provide 10 under a maximum standard of 30% more, you'd be able to provide three more spaces than what you, and, and then you couldn't provide anymore. And in Corvallis, and, and we are, we don't need to talk about this, but we would exclude, this would just apply to surface parking, this wouldn't apply to parking provided in garages. Like Corvallis actually requires, if you provide over this number of spaces and over our minimum, it's going in a, it's not going to be surface parking. They're trying to encourage garages to reduce the amount of surface parking. We don't have that in our code, but we would exempt underground parking from the maximum. And, you know, anything that was above or below the building or in a garage, we, this would just apply to surface parking.
Now, Marilyn.
Thank you. We don't have, if I've heard that correctly, we don't have very many instances around Albany of overbuilding parking lots, is that correct? Most people.
Big boxes. I mean, I think, I didn't check Home Depot and Costco, but I did check Lowe's, because we remember that they provided a lot more than we thought they needed. Lowe's did 48% more. Now, vehicle repair, I mean, again, our formula right now is, is based on the square footage. So in doing this research, there might be a few standards that we might just update, you know, to make it more realistic. But some of these vehicle repairs, you've got the customer spaces, but then they need a lot of parking spaces to store their cars, you know what I mean? So it's, it's a little different. But essentially, no, people are not providing much more than 10 to maybe 15 or 20% more, if any additional.
Okay. As an aside, I, I, when I think of vehicle repair, I don't think of the spaces where vehicles that are being repaired are being stored as parking spots. To me, that's outside storage or inventory or something. But anyway, I, I think adopting the current minimums as maximums citywide is not a bad place to start, because we don't have very many exceptions to it already. Elm Street is a really good example of the a minimum maximum marriage. It works, I think. We stopped having complaints about that part of town when that was adopted. At least I did. So that that's all that counts. My phone's not ringing. It's working. I think I think that's a a good compromise.
And one, one thing that I would add is, depending on whether we adopt the the minimums as a new maximum or have a set percentage, there is other tools in our development code that's available. So say if whatever, whatever percentage we land on or number we land on for a maximum, if somebody came in with a one off and said, geez, I I need more parking than this. Well, we have variance processes that can go through. And and Ann and I talked about even the potential of looking at our adjustment process that goes through a conditional use to allow for those kind of outside instances where somebody needed more parking. Where they at least would have an avenue they could pursue that through. So I
Could I, I was wondering if I can get more information about why industrial zones would be excluded?
Oh, well, that was just an idea. If you were thinking about adopting something citywide, you might have some use types that you don't want to apply it to. I I was just, it it wasn't necessarily to be specific. But when I was thinking about industries, you know, do we want to have any obstacles to some of the things that we maybe don't know that much about how much parking they need? I don't know. I mean, it was just, it was an idea. And I'm actually surprised. I mean, it's great to hear that there's support for considering our minimums as a maximum. I mean, we were thinking that you might want to consider, you know, just kind of doing something a percentage above to give a little flexibility. But I thought there might be some use types that we wanted to ensure we weren't providing any obstacles to. So that's all.
Commissioner Reba, one, a great example of that would be to like the Target Hub or some of our food processing places that experience seasonal highs and lows. They typically like to provide that extra parking for seasonal employees, you know, because obviously they can't really park people on just grass. Our development code would prevent that. So it's just providing that opportunity for the ebb and flow of of their business. It was sometimes where we'll see a need to maybe have a a different type for based on the use. That just some things we're considering.
I have a question about maximum. So if my, so hypothetically, Novak's is 1,000 square feet. What if I opened a restaurant called Newton's? You know, but it was 950 square feet. Would that mean I would be only allowed to have nine parking spots? Or if I went 25% over? I'm just trying to think like, how would the fractional?
So we round up. We we round up. So you'd have to provide 10 under the the example I gave before.
Yep. Okay.
And then if there was any the maximum was a percentage over our current minimum, we would round up. So we have the, we have language in the code already to address rounding.
That's right.
Okay. Yeah. And I, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Bill.
So a little historic precedent. One of the reasons that we had these maximums is that back not so many years, it was a cheap option to just pave a large area. You didn't have to landscape. And you ended up with these, I don't know, the Buy Mart parking lot comes to mind, these sort of hellscapes of seas of asphalt. Well, that's no longer the case. Our our parking lots now have to have water treatment, water detention. They're not inexpensive things to develop. They're a lot more environmentally friendly. And so it it's more expensive for people to just pave the world and call it good. So I think that's something to keep in mind, that new parking lots are a lot more expensive and a lot more thought out and are less, have less tendency to be overly built by the the developer. And what Ron brought up is from his point of view is if we were going to have to look at our transportation policy and we're going to be encouraged to come up with some actions that will reduce people's need or desire to drive their cars. That's a tool he could, we could keep in our tool bag for making those reductions if we overstated our limit and then brought them down later. Okay, so just to follow up on what Ron was saying, it may be a little disingenuous to do that, but it does give us some, because the next thing we're going to face is this traffic thing. And how do we use traffic policy to also reduce the need for for people to to be in their cars? If that makes sense.
Speaking of that, though, I really like Winkles parking lot because all of the basins are pooled and all the plants are native and everything is geared towards less, less water. Yeah, less water and less waste.
Yeah, that absolutely. Parking lots are better than they used to be, but they're still not great.
Yeah. And next work session, we'll talk about some requirements around parking lots themselves. So I've kind of heard a mix of what to do with the maximum parking standard. And I mean, taking Ron's suggestion, we could bring back a maximum that's like 125% or 25% over our current minimum with an anticipation that we might reduce that with evaluation of of what we're going to need to do with the TSP and and I don't know. I think if you heard from the business community, they want flexibility and they probably wouldn't like having a parking maximum. But would they realistically build up to whatever that maximum is, you know? Maybe not because of the expense today compared to, you know, years past.
You know, I've been to Lowe's several hundred times since the pandemic started and quite often Lowe's has a full parking lot. So I think they built the right scale.
It's never full when I go, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm saying that whenever, you know, during the pandemic, Lowe's was quite full a lot of the time.
Well, ever, I was building stuff and doing gardening projects, myself included. I have a question about requirements for parking lots. Are we going to, what to require anything that's like a cooler option? A cooler parking lot option? I know that the black asphalt oftentimes absorbs and emits more heat. And as our climate is warming, is that something you want to maybe encourage or incentivize?
That's something we could talk to folks and and somebody like Commissioner Riles, who knows a lot about expenses around different materials. We don't have a requirement that I mean, we have some minimum requirements, but we don't address the color or the, I think, the finished surface material. But, you know, right now, we're just trying to comply with the state rules and that is not a requirement. And we do know, of course, you know, if you can avoid black asphalt and those heat islands, absolutely would be want to add that in our code. I think we just want to do some more research on implications of of acquiring that. But it's certainly something that I think it's possible other communities are considering. Yeah, grasscrete also.
Grasscrete? That sounds interesting.
Yeah, you can for you can have impervious surfaces to park on. But I mean, that's, we're starting to get into to other stuff right now. We're just trying to we have a lot to try to amend and to address and comply with the state rules. But that doesn't mean that there aren't other things that can be done to that might do a better job at addressing the current climate situation. So, yeah.
One of the things we do do in regard to that is the shading coefficient. We've increased the number of trees required in a parking lot because they do a remarkable job absorbing the sunlight and processing that, actually cooling the parking lot. And so we looked at different materials, but one of the things that Albany did quite a few years ago, and we were ahead of the curve, was to increase the amount of trees and what we call the shading coefficient, the size of the trees, the shadows that they spread across the parking lot. And that, you know, people don't notice it, but that has a real impact that that really does cut down on the heat that the parking lots create.
I thought I was reading in the packet that they were going to be requiring tree.
Yeah.
Yes, they, that's what happened.
They're requiring more than we do. Actually, we, we need, actually, this picture, and we need to get on to the EV. This is the Costco parking lot over here, just FYI. And I think when I go there, I'm like, wow, I can actually park underneath the tree. When you look at the aerial photo, it's like, and I don't know what year this is. Wow, there are hardly any the the tree canopy is pretty minimal, you know, but there are some trees, right? So we'll be talking about what the requirements will be for new parking lots over an a quarter acre or larger. So next, next time. I've got some input. I'm I'm not sure that there is strong support for any one direction, but I think we'll, we'll bring back something for you to give us more thoughts on next time. Is that okay? Yep. Okay, all right. So electric vehicle charging capacity. So we sort of talked about this a little bit earlier. This is based on the number of spaces provided. So if a development does not provide parking, there wouldn't be any requirement to provide electric vehicle pass capacity. And so one thing that we that the state is recommending, and and we think it's a good idea, is when parking is provided and there's an ADA space and there might be, there might be a couple of ADA spaces. And we have a certain percentage of the parking lot spaces need to have that electric vehicle capacity. Should we require some of that electric vehicle capacity to be provided for some of the accessible spaces? And I mean, I think common sense is yes, you'd want a certain percentage of those ADA spaces to have EV capacity. Same thing maybe for van pool, but I, we just wanted to get your thoughts on that because we do need a craft language around them.
I think we should absolutely include it. And there's a lot of language also from the Department of Energy with the ADA where they have different standards for the distance of the ramp and everything. So I'm happy to provide that. California has a code that they've utilized where 4% of their parking spaces are one of every 25 spaces and any lot is designated to be accessible. So if we can consider some sort of concrete specific number, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. So of the ADA spaces, how many need, you know, need to have that EV capacity? So, yeah, we can't require more ADA spaces than what the building division, what the building code requires. But I think what you're saying is is a percentage of the
Yes.
Those spaces. Right. Okay.
Nods around that.
Okay. There's something that came up and talking with our building official about about this because this will mostly be occurring through building, building permits and they'll be enforcing this. But when you might have a mixed use development on a property and the current code, this is building code, state law, 20% of the spaces for commercial development and and residential multifamily development need to have EV charging capacity. With the update with these climate friendly area rules, we are going to have to require 40% of parking spaces only for buildings that have five or more residential units. So it could be a multi dwelling unit building, or it could be a mixed use building that happens to have residential units in it and then privately owned commercial space. So you might have a situation on one property where you've got, so that would require 40%. But you might have a commercial building on a property and a separate residential building and they provided all these spaces. But you don't know who's, because they're sharing parking, you don't know which, you know, who it's for. I mean, I think the easiest way to do this is that all the spaces that are provided in a mixed use development when, if it's got the five or more residential units, you would have to do 40% instead of 20%. I mean, I, I don't know that there's any other way around it, but I just thought I'd bring that up if there were any ideas. I don't think you can average that and it might just become too challenging. Okay. You guys are okay, okay with that? Okay, that's it for tonight. But obviously, there is a lot more to go. And and it's happening really fast and and there are a lot of other things going on. So what we're going to do is we've already started working on some of the code language that where we need to make these updates. We're going to incorporate your feedback from tonight. And then we're also, this happens to mostly be in in one chapter of our development code, the off street, that includes off street parking requirements. We are going to bring back that draft code for you, but there are also some requirements for parking lots of a quarter acre or larger to, they have, there are a couple of options. Provide up to 50% tree canopy or solar capacity, or this is other pay and in lieu of fee, which, you know, we've got to figure all that out. But we're going to bring back draft language for you to review with all the other standards that we provided in your memo. And they're in the the rules that we provided for you. But we're, we're going to bring back that draft code language. The other thing that you may see in the, if you've actually read the OARS, the code language, the state rules, that we have to have policies to support a lot of this. And our comprehensive plan is the policy document, but we don't really have policies that address all these changes that we're proposing that might support walkable and bikeable communities or less runoff or whatever it is. So we're going to bring back some policies for your consideration so that we can add those to our plan so that we're doing this work based on city policies. So that is coming up March 6. And it's exciting. It's a lot of work. So we're trying to get your feedback on draft code, but then public hearings on this information. I mean, we were kind of hoping to have them in April and May, maybe May and June so that we can have our code updated by June 30th to reflect all this. So we might have time for another work session after March 6. We're going to kind of evaluate a placeholder maybe for that. And then we would have public hearings. And meanwhile, we're trying to get input from people that we work with at the at the counter. What do you think about this? Or Matthew's out and talking with, you know, the commercial brokers or or whatever. Are you, do you have concerns about, you know, these different things? And we'll try to get some public input around some of these changes so that we're, we're doing that piece of it rather than only having a public hearing. But it's just a lot of work in a short period of time. And and we know that we're going to be updating our TSP sort of soon. So we might be able to pick up some pieces that we think are important and do some of that policy work in another phase. I think that's it. But ideas or if you have codes or suggestions for those of you that kind of live and breathe us, you know, we we love to get that information. It's, it saves us time. And if you have ideas, we take all that into consideration. So.
I just, I just want to say this is a huge task and I really appreciate what staff is doing here. You're doing a great job and it's an amazingly difficult time to get through all this in such a short period of time. So I really think you're doing a great job. Thank you very much, Ann.
So we don't have any public comment?
Yeah. So I don't know if there's any public here. We did have an opportunity because we thought there might be some people from the community that are interested in these rules. And I'm not sure if anyone is on. It doesn't look like anyone is is on. I'm not sure if anyone's on online, but opportunity for public comment. Okay. And then with that, I mentioned it earlier at the beginning, but next Tuesday night, you will, we are going to have a, an sort of an open house with a little bit of a presentation on some methodology around how we've identified the other piece of this work is climate friendly areas. And we'll have some tables set up where you can kind of mark up the different areas. But if you want to learn more about the project, we do have a website. And actually, when you're on the main page, it's one of the circles, Climate Friendly and Equitable Community Circle. And share that information with your constituents and we hope to see you involved. And of course, you will be involved, you know, throughout the project, but we appreciate your input and your time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. We're adjourned.
Next meeting. Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Next meeting is March 6, correct? March 6, 5:15.
Yes, you know. That's why I'm like, if we're going to get
Thank you, everyone.
Company here or whatever, but.